Okay, good afternoon. It's 5:00 PM on Monday, October 21st, the Orno Town Council meeting. Roll call shows we have Councilor Sarah Marks with us virtually. We have Councilor Rob Larway, Councilor Dan Demerit, Councilor Leo Kenny, Councilor Matt Powers, and Councilor Jacob Baker here in present. Present with us today. The second item on our agenda is Agenda Review. This is a time when we assess the things that are referred to committee, discuss tabled items, and ask for any review or clarifications. I'm gonna have something to talk about in terms of adding to the agenda. Anything in that first under A or B? Anybody have any questions about?
I have one on A, Dan.
Sure.
I was just noticing that our Public Safety Building Discussion to begin in November, it's listed under referred to committee, but I don't think it ever was referred to committee, and it says beside it council. I think this is supposed to be a whole, I'm not sure. If there's a committee it's referred to, we need to specify what committee? If it wasn't, and it's really just referred for council discussion, perhaps that ought to be a tabled item instead of referred to committee? Is that something we could get corrected on the next agenda, maybe?
Yeah, if we're gonna table something, I think it takes a council action to table something, so we could bring it up. Let's add it as a discussion item for our next, our next meeting, and then we'll move from there.
Yep, sounds good. I just noticed it doesn't have a committee, so either we need to assign it to a committee, or we need to put it, acknowledge that it's being tabled for council. I don't know which, but we need to do something with it, I think.
Okay, great. Alright, I'm gonna ask that we add Order 24250 and order authorizing the town manager to execute a credit enhancement agreement transfer to Ventus Healthcare Realty LLC from Deere Go Pines LLC as an action item. We have an attorney here representing the purchaser, and we'll have some residents, we'll have some staff will be able to have a conversation with us, and well, I think we're gonna get some representation from the Deere Go Pines Homeowners Association around 5:30 or so, so we'll have a chance to have a conversation. We don't have to act on it tonight, but we can't talk about it unless we add it to our agenda, so. Any objection? So should I move that? You know who does it.
So moved.
Okay, Matt, you gonna second that one?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to add Order 24250 to our agenda. Councilor Larway?
In favor.
Councilor Marks?
In favor.
Councilor Demerit's in favor. Councilor Kenny?
In favor.
Councilor Powers?
In favor.
Councilor Baker?
Yep.
Okay. What's that? Okay, can you remind us when we get down to the consent stuff? Yeah, yeah, let's do, let's do those when we get down there. Okay, thanks.
Dan, is Clint's mic on? Cause I can't hear Clint.
Got it, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That completes Agenda Review. Now approval of minutes. I take a motion to approve the minutes of October 7th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Just messing with me now. It's been moved and seconded. Aaron, any comments or suggestions to the minutes from October 7th? Okay, we'll do the roll call. Councilor Larway?
In favor.
Councilor Marks?
In favor.
Councilor Demerit's in favor. Councilor Kenny?
In favor.
Councilor Powers?
In favor.
Councilor Baker?
Favor.
Yeah, passage unanimously, six to zero. Public comments, this is a time for Orno residents to speak to us about anything, or any resident, or anyone really, to speak to us about anything that's not on our agenda. Are there any member of the public either here or online who'd like to speak in public comment today? Okay. That'll move us to item five on our agenda, which is Presentations and Discussion Items. We have a library report with Haley Ward. Town Manager Deschande, are you gonna lead this off for us?
I am. So Haley Ward is available. Lori's out, but they, the, no real questions. It's more of, if you look at the agenda, there's, there's some segues in there, there's in groupings. There's basically two agreements we gotta have, because we're separating the construction project into design, and then in Phase One, and then bidding in construction in Phase Two. So we've had our attorneys review this, and what we're gonna be asking for is that's later on in the agenda's orders, is that the first one would approve the foundation, Orno Library Foundation, to be the owner's representative through design. It's kinda neat, cause the, the grant they received went to them, but again, we are the owner, so we have to authorize them to be our representative through design. The commitment and the process we've laid out is they will bring back a project that's on budget that we can then take to bid. This agreement has a 10% contingency, so as long as it's, the bid comes in within 10% of the estimate at the end of design, if we wanna value engineer it, we pay for it. If it's over 10%, and we wanna value engineer it to get it back on budget, the engineering firm will have to do that at their cost. That's the way we've set it up. And then the second part, you can approve now, or we can do it sometime later. We haven't worked through all the agreements, but the owner's agreement for the 139,600, I believe is in there, is for the bidding and construction phases. So we separated those out. Those don't have to be acted on now, but it would be beneficial if you could give an authorization to approve, because we'll do those at some date here, and it would, you wouldn't have to bring it back and have a re-update of the process. They will be keeping the community apprised through the design. It is with Haley Ward, that's who did the conceptual, so that's why they wanted to move forward with them. That's kinda the short version of what's going on with why we brought Haley Ward forward with those agreements. The design cost, I can tell you in two seconds, was, it's in the memo, but just for the public.
Go ahead, Leo.
169,300, is that?
That's the, that's the bidding and construction phase. The design phase is for 400.
500.
537,300.
Thank you.
And, I don't know.
Council Kenny?
Are we talking about that now, or we, or, because I was curious, where do those funds come from?
Where did what come from?
Where, where do those funds come from? The 537, 169?
All coming from their CDS funding that they received?
They've already, they've already received that.
Well, they're working through that process, but yes, that money's been approved. They're getting it queued up so that they can do their drawdowns. No local funds paying for this. That's what the memo tries to explain. This is all coming from their grant proceeds. The no match at this phase, the match comes later. Again, it's, they get that money, they will be giving it to us to pay the bills, but we are the owner. It's our building, our land, so in order to navigate this correctly, we wanted to sign these agreements with them as the owner's representative, but they did receive the money for this initial phase. We do have the $2.6 million match requirement that will be in a future bond and capital planning items, but this has nothing to do with that at this stage. It's no town funds at this point.
I had a question, Clint.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Hold on a second, Sarah, just one second.
Yeah.
So, um, what do we have? Alright, Sarah, go ahead with your question, then we'll have Lori come in with, with her, Lori Carpenter, our librarian will come in here, Chief Library Director.
Okay. Um, Clint, I was just trying to understand, so, um, in your reading your memo, it sounded to me like the Library Foundation was going to serve as the owner's representative only for Phase One, and then by Phase Two, the town takes back over that responsibility. Is that correct?
Yep.
They still have the money, and they would give it to us, but yes, at bidding and construction, it's completely the town. The representatives that we would have are town staff, so you don't have to appoint them, but I did indicate it would be Bill Cody, as well as Lori, because Lori's, and they would also have the support of a clerk of the works. That would be a hired service.
Yep.
Great. Does it affect our bond rate at all when we work with an owner's representative at a stage, or does it not?
I do not believe so. I've never heard of that. More, it's your total indebtedness, your ability to pay, and your total taxes.
Great. And my other question is, you mentioned the 10% contingency, but in one of the attachments, I believe it showed only a 7.5% contingency? Do you know what that difference was about? 7.5 seemed low to me. I think 10% contingency is pretty common. Maybe Lori can speak, or maybe I, I'll have to go hunting for which document, but I jotted down a note at the time. Yeah.
I think what you're, yeah, 10% is the, is the estimate that has to be within the 10%. The 7.5, I think, is the contingency set aside for overages during construction. So the amount of money we've pre-budgeted for contingencies at 7.5, but the estimating and bidding prices are at a 10% rule. Lori, correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Sorry, Sarah, go ahead.
No, Lori, you go.
So I just wanted to clarify. Oops.
Go ahead, Lori, I'm sorry.
If James is there, maybe he's doing the same, saying the same thing that I wanna say.
James, do you wanna come up to the mic in case we have questions for you, and introduce yourself, please?
And make sure the green light's on.
But maybe after whatever Lori has to say.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify the total amount for the entire project, which is 8.6. So, two, I'm sorry, 3.6 is coming from the CDS funding. 2.6 the town council has pledged for the project, and then the rest we are fundraising. So we're still in that process. Now, the CDS funding, we haven't gotten it yet. We're still in, also in that paperwork process, and we're not necessarily 100% clear, but maybe James is, when we can start drawing down on that. So just wanted to make that clarification. I'm not sure about the percentages, so, sorry about that, but James may have more info.
Hi, I'm James Jackson-Sanborn. I'm the Director of, or the, sorry, that's my day job. I am the President of the Orno Library Foundation. Yeah, so Lori kinda just went over the broader portion of the proposal, or a broader portion of the project, which those massive numbers haven't changed. But this is specifically around the next stage of the design, and so the first of those two stages is the portion where we take it from the conceptual design that we are fundraising with, through the final design and engineering, and the documents that get it ready to build. And that's kinda the phase at which we hand over all that work, and by that point, we will have completed fundraising, we will have done, had the funding, and we would have the mechanism for pulling the CDS funding to pay for portions that that pays for, and other funds going over to the town to pay for the rest of it. And that then, though, becomes the bid process, which is owned by the town, cause as the building owners, you wanna be the ones who are in charge of the bidding, and in charge of the building, and in charge of all of that. But those funds, that 169, I think, was the number that we have in there, those are accounted for in that original budget as well. So it's not like these are additional funds that we're asking for.
So, I don't know if this is for James or for Clint, but I get that they're accounted for in there, and that's part of it. I'm still back to where are these funds being drawn from, cause I think I just heard from Lori that we don't have the CDS funding. I don't know where you were at on the fundraising of the 2.4, it sounds like you're, is what you're making up. So there's our 2.6, the CDS 3.6, and 2.4. If we're gonna authorize 537 and 169, where are those funds drawn from?
Those will be coming from the foundation to pay for the, that money. We have, uh, in any event, and I think that this is something that, even as the owner's rep, I, my understanding is that the foundation would be paying the invoices that come from the, from the design firm. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So these are not gonna be coming through state, or through the town office at all. So those are funds that are gonna be being paid for by the foundation. The 560, and 537. And so that will be mostly from fundraised funds, and currently, 60 donors have contributed nearly $500,000 so far in our quiet face. Not, not silent, cause we kinda went by that, but so we're, we're still in the very early stages of our fundraising, and have raised, I, oh, but $300 of 500,000. So that's the continued fundraising for that, is what will be used to pay for this portion, until such time that we're able to draw down on CDS funds. And the drawdown on CDS funds, there are different requirements for different portions that you have to be, that you're able to draw down on, and how those come into us, and then paying the bills and all of that.
Council Baker?
Correct me here, Lori and James, but to get to the point of Leo's question, so I am the council-designated liaison, whatever, to the Foundation Library Board, and so no town funds will be spent at this point. They're sitting at about $230,000 in cash with, you know, what, James said pledges are receivable, so they, they do have the funds to, to cover this, and fundraising is going at a, at a really good pace, especially given the stage that it's, it's in, so. Correct me here, but no town money will be spent.
Correct. We're not gonna be asking for money to come out of town bank accounts to pay for this 537 portion.
And I'm, I'm sure this is, as the ultimate owners, I guess, that's why, I mean, I guess this is a formality. It just feels a little strange that we're approving the spending of $700,000, but it's not coming out.
My understanding is it's not that you're approving the spending of that, you're approving, having the town, or having the foundation act as owner's reps on designing, designing around a building that is owned by the town.
We are executing an agreement, which has a price tag on it. Which seems, which ultimately, and ultimately, we are on the hook for more than that anyway, I guess, but it just, the order seems, again, a little confusing to me, that's all, and I'm just trying to wrap my head around. If, we don't have a fund for that to come out of, but yet we're signing and saying that we're, we're committing, we're executing that agreement with a vendor for that amount.
Correct.
With not really a way for us to pay for it.
You'd have to use surplus. I mean, if they default, we are responsible, but again, they have the funds. The federal government has approved their funds. They just haven't approved how they're releasing them. They have a, that was provided at you at an earlier date, the letter of agreement from CDS, and federal government congressionally-directed spending. They were approved in 2023's funding allotment, I believe it was. So again, that's their money, they have this. They've also got their fundraising money. They're telling they're committing, but it's our building, it's our land. We have to designate them. You, they gotta have some legal authority for what they're doing down there, so that's the stage we're at. Otherwise, they'd have to wait on a bond proceed process to even start design, which will change timelines greatly.
So is, is, has staff been involved with this agreement? Or has this been the foundation that has structured this whole agreement?
Bill, myself, and Lori are the staff that are working on it. I sent it off to the town's attorney, cause I wanted to have it updated to meet this goal of a separated process, that they're our owner's representative. They reviewed it. It's a, I mean, the attachments are there, they're quite lengthy, but it's been fully reviewed by attorney. Haley Ward's agreed to it, in the format that it's there. Yeah, been a negotiation.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Any questions from the public? I guess, so we do the presentation, questions from the public, then council discussion? Well, we're not voting on it anyway, it's just a presentation.
Present, well, votes later in the agenda.
Yeah.
So I, I'm back just for a minute. I think part of this, too, is just kind of keeping the council apprised of what's going on. So wanted to bring this, you know, so that you're aware of where the foundation is, and, and what next steps are happening. So I think that's one of the reasons to bring it to you.
Thanks, Lori. I appreciate that, and I, and I definitely, obviously, I think we need to be kept apprised. I'm just, it's a weird, it's a weird, it's a different arrangement that I'm just trying to wrap my head around, so sorry to be doing this in a public meeting, but.
Alright, Sarah, did you have something?
Um, yeah, I just had one more question. Thanks. This has been really helpful. Thanks, Lori, and thank you so much, James, for keeping us surprised, and Clint for doing all this work about how to have this arrangement work legally and financially. My only other question really is just, as this progresses, so my question about contingency was just 7.5% seems kind of low to me for building contingency. I think it's typically 10. Can somebody speak to that at all, and, and are we comfortable at a 7.5 contingency level? And more specifically, what happens if the project does go over budget? Do we have any written agreement stating that the town's commitment is capped only at 2.6, and that further fundraising would have to be done from the foundation? Or if it goes over that 7.5% that's already there in the contingency, how, how would that be handled at that point?
You want me to?
Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, what ifs are very difficult. What if it's over by a dollar? What if it's over by 8 million? I mean, those are very different answers, I think, that we would have at the foundation, the council level, but the way I prioritize this with the engineering firms that are working for the town, as the, as the owner's representative, not the, as the town manager owner representative, budget's the priority. I said next would be our quality, and then the last is schedule. That's been discussed at the meetings as well, but we would love to see the schedule met. But again, if anything has to be sacrificed, schedule will be sacrificed. They must bring it in on budget. Met with multiple people at Haley Ward to convey that information. That doesn't mean it will be, and if it doesn't, we'll have to figure that out, but I think you're correct. It would probably be fundraising would be the hopes, and we would see what the town would do, but again, right now, I'm limiting us to our 2.6 million pledge, which is what we will end up bonding, and see where we go from there. And as far as the 7.5, there is attachment Exhibit C, where it outlines it. We've reviewed those multiple times. That's the contingencies and the way they built them. I am comfortable with that, so take a look at those again if you wanna follow up with more specifics. That budget is in the attachments.
Thank you.
Clint, okay. If there's nothing else, we'll conclude the presentation. Just wanna say, James and Lori, thank you for being with us here tonight, and remarkable work going on in terms of the quiet phase, and looking forward to continue to work with you to get the project moving ahead.
Dan, was that the presentation, or was that still part of our Agenda Review, adding that other item to the agenda? Cause I don't know, do we have a public comment period?
No, I'll do the public comment period when we do the actual agenda item further down.
Oh, no, I meant, I guess I meant the actual, like, opening of the meeting after the approval of the minutes, the public comment portion.
Yeah, we did that.
Oh, we did? Okay, sorry, I forgot.
It's alright. Okay, the next item under Presentation Discussion Items is Council Goal Setting and Town Manager Work Plan, and I don't have the attachment right in front of me. We've talked about, is there a, there should be a memo in the agenda?
Mitch can bring it up.
Yeah, Mitch, can you bring it up for us, please, if you have it? Thank you. So we have in our, because we should do it to be, you know, effect, an effective council, but also because we're contractually over the barrel with Clint in terms of doing a goal-setting process, which I thought was, you know, that was something we negotiated when we were hiring Clint, a goal-setting process, and to give him something to develop a work plan on. And so we've been talking about in our council leadership meetings, it's, that's a meeting with Clint. Sarah and I, we meet on the Monday opposite council meeting, so we would've met last, I guess Tuesday in this case, cause the last holiday. But we meet to talk about the agenda, and, you know, various items that we need to bring forward to the rest of the council. And we're talking about a proposal. We wanted to get your feedback on how to proceed with setting goals for the council that we would essentially endorse and vote on, and present those to, to the public, but also as a, something to keep us accountable, and, and something for Clint to develop a work plan against. So this was, we came up with a couple different options. Today, you're receiving this memo, October 21st. On October, on November 3rd, we would approve a, a process by vote. We'd either, they would have us spending an hour on goals and consolidating them to a set of goals for the municipal year 2025, or we'd, step two is we'd discuss for a time, a discussion, and then we'd call a special work session, probably December 2nd, where we'd have a couple-hour work session where we try and finalize goals, and kinda sit together for two hours and talk about the things that we talk about when we're trying to, uh, draft a document or a plan in real time, in public meeting with all of us together. So I guess you could, one or two, yeah.
Can I just say one thing, Dan?
Yeah, well, let me just, let me just say, I, I think we've done a lot of good work over the last year from everything we did. We did a, Your Voice Matters Service Promise. We developed a, some guiding principles for our leadership transition that we've had here in the town of Orno, and we did a tremendous amount of work that I'm particularly proud of, in terms of identifying the town manager job description that involved a lot of surveys of, you know, we surveyed, heard from like 300 Orno residents in developing that. So I think we've got a lot of good content ahead of us. And Sarah and I spent time on Friday going through, she did a lot of work, as she always does, kinda going back through it all, and, and we had a good conversation about all the work that we've done as a council over the last year or more, to, to, and now it's up to us to decide what we wanna state for our goals. So Sarah, take it from there, I'm sorry.
No, it's good. I just sorta wanted to clarify. The one thing I'm not sure is fully clear in the memo is just that option one means we meet on the 18th for an hour, that an hour of our meeting on the 18th is devoted to goal-setting. Option two means that we get a longer stretch. We get two hours to do our goal-setting. But no matter which option, one or two, we would eventually need to approve those goals on December 9th. So although this part is only listed down here under step two, either way, council needs to approve those goals on December 9th. So really, the difference here is just whether council thinks we can do this in an hour on November 18th, or whether we think we need two full hours, in which case we really do need to have a special council workshop to do it. In the past, we've had a workshop every other year, and we have spent two hours on the goals in the past two years. So the question is, do we feel like we can do it in an hour, and we wanna try that on the 18th, or would we like to have two full hours, in which case we need to call a special meeting to fit it in?
Council Baker has a question.
So I'm just a little bit confused here. So these are, we would be meeting to set goals for the town manager? Ourselves. So this is what the council wants to accomplish in the next year?
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a council work plan, then?
Yeah, and then, and then these would be presented to the manager, and as our employee, be, you know, he'd develop a work plan that would move us along. You know, we do our work as council, as a council, but it would certainly be something that guides, you know, something that guides Clint's work. And I'd like, you know, I want us to be on record of saying, you know, at the start of the municipal year, we said these were our goals, and then creates accountability for us, and something Clint can work against. So when we're evaluating his performance in a year from now, or not quite a year from now, we'll have, this is what we set out as goals, and these are all the things you delivered, you know, in that. And also, I think it'd be very helpful for Clint in terms of creating accountability for us in terms of how much we ask for. So if we set goals, and he develops a work plan, and you know how we are, right? You know, so it's like, okay, his work plan has, you know, this bucket, and then let's say some counselor named Demerit comes up with an idea sometime in March, well, then we gotta discuss, that Clint's gotta be able to pull something off his work, existing work plan to accommodate whatever fresh new idea, you know, obviously brilliant, but fresh, a fresh new initiative Dan's come up with in March. So it's kinda that.
And so I understand, okay, so this is basically council priorities that then get developed into a work plan, and so I understand that that's part of our agreement with the town manager, but from a timing perspective, wouldn't this be better to do during the budget process? Because we can come up with all the priorities we want, but if we don't fund them, then they won't occur.
Well, not everything has to take money, Dan, come on. If there's a fiscal note, we'll have to come back, we'll have to come back with a fiscal note.
You just referred to me as Dan, Councilor Kenny.
Whatever your name is.
We're losing control. Losing control here.
I think that, um, I also think.
Clint has a point, too, yeah.
Okay. I just wanna say, I think the other thing that's important to note here is, this is not just about Clint having our goals clearly stated to build his work plan around. It's also about, as Dan said, us being accountable to what we've committed, or, you know, agreed as a group that our goals are both within ourselves and then for the public, because we also will be evaluated in the 360 evaluation process on these goals, right? Like, are we making progress toward what we said we are going to accomplish? And I think that's important for us as a council.
But aren't we evaluated every three years in November? I, I guess maybe I'm being too naive about this, but that was an actual serious question.
True. I guess, sticking to the matter at hand, I'm gonna suggest. I was wanting to suggest that I think we'll need the two hours.
You think we will?
Damn it.
Clint?
I agree. I wish we wouldn't, because it's late here, but I agree.
And again, the, the short version, you set the goals, and again, at five to 10, kinda, you know, the closer to five, the better, the further from five, the harder it's gonna be to fit everything in, in a meaningful way. Then I present back to you some goal, a work plan for me and staff, by departments, by areas. Those become part of the work plans. I will work with them on the different things they need to implement as we bring it forward. Those will all be very heavily expressed in the budget that will be presented in the spring, and then when it is my annual evaluation, you're gonna see a nice report that you will read in executive session on how I self-evaluate our abilities. I'm hopeful, I've never done this, and I'm toying with the idea that the work plan will be similar to like a Gantt sheet, that it'll have schedules of when things are. I'm fairly certain from what I've seen from the goals you've set, many of these will probably exceed a year. I shouldn't say many, some. So we gotta have that out there as an acknowledgement that if we wanna take on, for example, the library is a goal you've committed to, you've made a pledge. That will be in the work plan. It doesn't have to be a goal, but it's part of your work plan that we'll be working towards the library. The library's a. That will be in the work plan, it doesn't have to be a goal, but it's part of your work plan that we'll be working towards the library, the library is a three-year schedule. So it will say that on there, so you'll understand that as we're moving forward, that will take a significant amount of bills and Lori's and my time. So that's how we bring it forward, so you understand where I'm allocating our resources.
Alright, so it sounds like Matt, unless you or Rob are gonna. Give us a strong case for the one hour option, it looks like we're gonna go the two hour option, is that the?
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that we do the three hour.
Time served, time served during this meeting.
I think we should do option one and two with this council.
Alright, let's do option two then, for, no wait, which one was it, okay, yep, option two. So we'll have a short conversation at the 18th. And a longer two hour session on the second. For our council goals. Of November. Yep.
Clint's mic is off again.
Oh, sorry.
You'll get a summary of the November 3rd, by November 3rd of all the goals or things I feel you've done or actions, like your voice matters is a goal. You've done that, if you want to keep it, you can, you want to get rid of it, you can, but I'm going to show you the things I feel you've queued up over the past year or two.
Great. Alright, alright, well, thank you for that discussion, I thought that was helpful, anything else? On that one? Alright, now we're moving into presentation. Public hearings. Alright, this is public hearing A, it's uh to consider a class one malt liquor wine and spirits liquor license and victor's license. For S and M Corporation DBA Thai Orchid at 28 Hill Street. Pat?
Captain Gessie, Code Enforcement Officer, and our recommendations are based off police fire and our town clerk. Um, we're recommending a conditional license tonight. Um, just due to a malfunctioning exhaust hood and next week they have someone coming to fix that.
Okay, so that, is that the one we're going to pull off the, yeah, okay, make a minor change. Okay, any, any comments from the public in this public hearing? Any questions from counselors? We'll close public hearing A, move on to public hearing B, to consider, got to bang the gavel. Um, to consider a class one A. Hotel malt liquor wine and spirits liquor license, special amusement permit for music, dancing, entertainment and victor's license. For NEH 14 LLC DBA Black Bear Inn and Conference Center for Godfrey Drive in Orno, Pat?
Sections are completed, paperwork is in and we're recommending approval.
Any comments from the public? Any questions or comments from counselors? We'll close public hearing B, thank you, Pat, appreciate it. And public hearing C. Is a public hearing to consider amendments to the town of Orno Code of Ordinances, Chapter 34, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 3, Stopping, Standing and Parking, Section 3495. Prohibited parking to address the Margin Street winter parking ban, we'll have a presentation from staff.
Well, Cody, Public Works Director. So basically we're asking to have a no parking during the months of November, all the way through April, November 1st through April 15th. No parking to the left side of the street as you come off Henderson or Harrison Street. The other side of the street they can park on temporarily, they're really not supposed to, but that's the side of the street we just need blocked off.
So that's the side of. That's along the train track?
Correct.
Okay. Do you have to back? In and out of your um. I was talking to a resident on, on Margin, and he said that. You had the, the trucks would pull all the way down Margin to the bottom of the Harrison, which is one way. And then you'd have to back up the whole way, is this going to change that, or say you don't have to back up?
Not really, not right now.
Alright.
We'll still go that route.
Okay.
Can. Does, do people remember, I thought we, we did change the timing of this last year, but I. Does anyone recall? Didn't we?
Mitch? Yeah.
Mitch does.
We're getting, I got us a little out of order, we'll ask the public if they have any comments right after this.
Sorry, this isn't the winter parking ban, this is. Changing the parking on that street, which is a different portion of this, the winter parking ban is different and that's based on. Normally in November 1st to April 15th with the discretion of the council, of the um town manager and the Public Works Director. This is strictly changing it on. Mar, uh Margin Street. In that area. For that same period of time, but it is for plowing purposes.
Yeah, so what did we change, can you remember, can you remind me how we changed it, because I think we were a little more. We eased up a little bit, it wasn't November, it's not November 1st.
So what, what the ordinance now allows is allows for the, the town manager and the Public Works Director. To communicate um a different start date than November 1st. They can push it back if the weather is fine, and then once it starts, it starts. So if November 2nd, we decide to go move it fast further forward and it snows like crazy and you have to change it. Once it starts, it starts, but allows them some flexibility in when to start that day.
And so can we make that apply to this or no? Is that because it's a different section, you can't?
Uh, to be honest with you, I'd prefer not to, I'd like to leave it the way it is, just on that one side of the street. They want to park, that's why we just did that side of the street as opposed to the whole street. That street just causes us a lot of problems. And I think if you, you go too much like that, well, we'll decide we're going to do it November 15th this year, well, then all of a sudden we don't get snows. Or we get a snow on November 1st, so we just felt. We did the, the standard, November 1st to April 15th, I reached out to other communities, that's kind of what they said is the standard. We're not going to make a move, I mean, we'll make the move as much as we have to. But it's really trying to keep that side of the street the way we have to plow, especially on that, on that road, it just makes it very hard for our guys to be able to plow.
Are there any? Questions for, comments from the public? Oh, bring them in. It's exciting. Hi, Robin, could you, could you introduce yourself, please, and share your comment?
I am Robin Hamilton, I live at One Margin Street. And it's right at the bottom of Harrison Avenue, I've got. Two houses, 26 Harrison and then right behind it is One Margin. I'm a little confused of it, what is changing, like right now, are you saying that once the ban starts? That no one will be allowed to park on the left side of the street? That everybody would need to be in their respective driveway areas? Is that what I'm hearing?
That is correct.
That would be great, okay.
That's, can I clarify?
Yeah. Stay with us, Robin, just for a second, go ahead.
We're referencing the winning parking ban a lot, but the winter parking ban is just that, for winters only. This is amending your parking prohibited parking, there will be no left hand to the side of the street parking on Margin Way, it's too narrow. It says prohibited, this gives the police at any time in the year, just like all the other streets listed. To go in there and say, you're not supposed to be parking there, that's your prohibited parking, it's not limited to winter. There's nothing in that ordinance that says prohibited parking for winter only.
Well, it, it does say that we're changing it from November 1st to April 15th though still, so there is still going to be a period where people can park. Uh, uh, on that side of the street.
There would be such a, a. Problem down here because. Honestly, there are more people in some of the residences down here with cars than would handle in a driveway. There are always people on the, at least the. Uh, first section coming down from Harrison down onto Margin. To the, to the railroad tracks and it's getting worse, um also with this train going by and stuff, people are. Well, it's just, it's not happy, it's not happy, that's a different issue. But I fortunately have a big enough driveway so that my three tenants have room to park. But. I don't know what they do in, with, with tenants changing and everything each year. Uh, I think it could be a problem.
I mean, I can speak to the fact, I, I used to live down there and it was impossible, for, for many people who rent down there, there aren't enough parking spots for people who are renting, the, the. This building system have it, so it's an ongoing problem for a lot of renters down there. I'm still not saying that we shouldn't go in this direction, it sounds like it's, it's a necessary change, um but. I think that is something that.
Would it be possible?
I don't know if it's up to us, but.
Is it possible to have people park on the right side of the street, so it's next to the houses? Instead of being on the opposite side?
In the, in this ordinance, what we're doing right now, we're just saying to the left side of the street, we are not referencing the whole street, just the right side of the street. On the side the railroad tracks are on, so it still gives you, we'd prefer not, you're not supposed to park there when we're snip, when we're plowing. But it still would give you the ability to park. To the right of where the houses are. And we also don't want to take it away in the summer, because we don't need to be around there in the summer, so we felt this was the best way, it was a good option. To be able to try to keep that side of the street clear, so when our guys are coming down off that. At that uh street, the other street, uh so we're not hitting anything or plowing into anything else.
But winter parking is during a storm. This is winter parking. All winter long. Storm or no storm, you will not park on the left side of the street.
Overnight.
From.
Overnight.
From November 1st to April 15th.
Correct.
And that's winter parking.
Hit or miss, it's, don't do it.
But that's the same with winter parking, you can't park overnight, oh, it's nothing to do with the storm, once we start.
Once we start, correct.
Yeah. Just so we're clear, we're confusing two different things.
Yes.
Winter parking ban, the winter parking ban is November 1st to April 15th, 8am, I mean 8pm to, to, no, midnight to 8am. That's all winter long when that's in effect, this would be no parking. From November 1st to April 15th on that side of the road, and there would be signs that say no parking from April 15th. So those are two different things, so during the, during the day, they can park on the right-hand side of the road, just not from midnight to eight in the morning. For the winter parking ban.
For the winter parking, but it is a seasonal thing that.
Seasonal but all day, permanently seasonal as opposed to sporadic or during storms and overnight.
Yeah.
So they're trying to clean up the street. And the cars are back parking on the street in the, in the winter parking ban on both sides, and they can't get the trucks in and out. So they're closing down one side of the street all winter long, so that no matter when they're in there cleaning up, they know there will be no cars on one side of the street. On Margin all winter.
Right.
Should have clarified that a little bit better, but I want to make sure everybody's kind of getting that.
Yeah.
That's, we use the term winter parking and it makes you queue up what the winter parking ban is.
I think.
Robin, do you have another, go ahead.
Yes, I think where the confusion is coming, maybe it's just me, but because people come down Harrison. And go on to Margin, when you guys are saying the left side of the street. I'm looking out at Margin Street right now and the left side of the street is the side with the tracks. And that's where a lot of people park their cars and that's where there's the problem in my opinion with the plowing. If people were allowed to park at any time of the year on the side of the house that they reside in. That would clear. What for me is the left side of the street, the railroad side of the street. And then. Whoever is living there, they have to work out with their own driveway or in front of their own house. Um, it's confusing to me when you're saying left side of the street, I don't know whether you're talking about coming north or going south.
Railroad track side.
Okay, it's always a railroad track sign, we're not moving the railroad track time of day. Tuesdays and Wednesdays, it's always the same side of the street. Okay, and I assume we're gonna, Robin, how'd you find out about this, by the way, you've been reading our agendas?
No, we notified him.
Uh, no, you guys sent a card, in fact, you, you sent a card and I'm thankful for that, my neighbor who is just. Uh, one house up did not receive. Um, a card, but I'm assuming because she's Harrison Avenue, she's right at the base of Harrison.
Yeah, well, I'm very, I gave it, I don't know if you can see, I gave a thumbs up, because I'm really happy town sent sta, a card to people and I assume that. We approve this at our next meeting, that will. Be kind of more of an education, we're not going to tell anybody right away, right, we're going to be nice about it and educate the people who live there in the, in the way that. You know.
Yes, I would leave it to enforcement to make those decisions, but we always try to be as polite as possible.
I know, yep, I like that about Orno, any other questions? Alright, so we're not acting on this, this is the public hearing, so we'll, it'll be back on our agenda in two weeks, the first November. Okay, great, thank you very much, and as always, you can park in front of uh Jim, uh James' house on Merrill Street anytime you want. Alright. That concludes our public hearings. Next we're up to acknowledgements by counselors. And we'll start on the right side this time with Counselor Baker.
Thank you to public safety and everything you did um for homecoming weekend, it was uh from my understanding, successful um event, thank you.
Counselor Powers?
I just want to say the, the Orno Middle School soccer team is going to play for the regional championship tomorrow at 3. They're undefeated, the team that they are going to be playing, they just, they scraped by three to two last time, so if you can come out and support the junior high at 3 o'clock tomorrow, they'll be playing on the high school. Field this time, as so I've heard, so um, let's support our junior high soccer club.
Counselor Kenny?
I do not have any.
Okay, I do not have any, Counselor Marks?
Um, yes, I just want to acknowledge the Orno Historical Society, um who's been really getting quite um. More, much more active and more members and are planning a fundraising. Dance for December 7th, more information forthcoming, I'm sure to the whole community, but. The fundraising would be in part for the Historical Society, but largely for the Jobs for Main Graduates program. At the high school has a project getting Christmas gifts out to students in need. So it's a great fundraiser partnership with Historical Society, please pay attention for further information and thanks to the Historical Society. For the energy and enthusiasm and new ideas.
Counselor Larway?
Yeah, um. I acknowledged her last time, but I would like to acknowledge the, the work of our uh town planner Isabel Ashley. Uh, one more time and also shout out the fact that the survey um that she put together uh in collaboration with the Comprehensive Plan Committee. Uh, is still up and I encourage people to fill it out on, you can go to the town website for the Comprehensive Plan Committee, you can find a link to the survey. Um, to help give feedback on what you think is important as we develop this 10-year plan for the town. Um, it's going to be still open until, or it's going to be open through this coming Thursday, the 24th. So make sure if you haven't filled out that survey, uh make your voice heard before then, thank you.
I'll, uh, thank you, Rob, I'll take back my time and just uh remind people that the potluck is going to be on November 3rd. Sunday, November 3rd, and uh the information's getting out, the flyers are up, it's on the sign outside on the street, Sarah, so we're getting it around. And I'm looking forward to doing dishes again, as is the responsibility of the town council chair at the end of the potluck. Yeah, I do them. All by myself, Jamie comes and helps, but it's mostly me. Alright. Just kidding, I'm mostly kidding. I know, I like doing it, but you guys, I wanted to get that dishwasher funded, but nobody wanted to fund the dishwasher, so I have to keep doing it. Alright, now we're on to the consent agenda, we're going to pull. Order 24233. Oh, I'm sorry, did Sarah, do you have anything? No, she didn't. She already went.
We both have memory issues.
He tuned me out so much when I'm telling jokes that you just kind of miss other parts of that, I get it. Alright, we're going to pull order 24233 and make that an action item and. I wanted to ask, um, Rob Leo and I are still working on a, a standing date for the order review committee, can we leave that as not yet confirmed and leave it in the consent agenda, is that okay with? So that's what we'll do. Alright. Anything else, members of the public, you can pull stuff, you want to watch us vote on these things one at a time, we can do that, or we can pass this all by consent. I will take a motion then to enact the move forward to the consent agenda for all items except for order 24233.
Moved.
Moved by Counselor Baker. Seconded by, I can't tell which one, we're giving that one to Leo. Okay, although now we'll do the roll call vote, Counselor Larway?
In favor.
Counselor Marks?
In favor.
Counselor Demerit, in favor of the consent agenda, Counselor Kenny?
In favor.
Counselor Powers?
In favor.
Counselor Baker?
Favor.
Passed unanimously. Alright, now we're on to action items. And we didn't, I'd like to do the um. We didn't decide when we do it, but I'd like to do order 24250 first, because we have people here attending. Um, that's the order, is everyone okay with that? Yep. Order 24250 is an item we added by unanimous agreement this afternoon, this evening. Order authorizing the town manager to execute a credit enhancement agreement transfer to Ventis Healthcare Realty LLC from Deer Go Pines LLC. So I guess I will call on the town manager for a presentation, you can call up whoever he needs to participate in that presentation, John, I'm looking at you. And then we may have some questions from the public and the good folks from Deer Go Pines, I'm looking at you for this one, so if you have any questions. So we need a motion, good work.
So moved.
It's moved by Counselor Larway.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Powers, now Clint, you want to take it away?
Yeah, I, I mean, so John Poddle's here representing the, the, the transfer, so this, from a timing perspective, I sent out a summary. Um, this is something we've been, there's been some awareness, but the paperwork never came in till last week. We sent it off to the attorney, attorney's review came back. And there was just a lot of questions left, so it wasn't really ready for the agenda, but they have come forward and would like to see it on the agenda tonight. Um, because of some timelines and schedules that I think he can outline and go over with you. Um, in that process, staff has worked quite closely. And I can present more, answer more of the questions, but we are in a position now, the big one is, is there's an attachment that I've shared with you that we'll have to get out to the community. Um, I. Um, I am in a position as the town manager after certify that the credit enhancement can be transferred. The test that we're using is there, is we have to be reasonable. And there's certain things that have to be met, so we have, they have met all those conditions. There are some letters and some things that I'm recommending from conversation with the attorney. The biggest here is, is this is a council item. And for your promise to your voice matters and transparency, that's in your court on how you want to handle that. Um, so I brought that forward you, but they can bring to you. In short, Deer Go Pines is trans, is being sold. They have a credit enhancement agreement equal to 30% of the taxes that go on it. They receive that 30% back. Um, and that would go for another eight years. And we have the assignment authority under this, but as long as they meet the test for reasonableness, it should occur. And as best we can tell, they've met all the needs and that attachment I gave you, we would be satisfied with at this point.
Okay. So the question, um, I, I know, do you want to ask John to come up and tell us why we've got the urgency? John, can you give us the, the big picture? Introduce yourself, please, and kind of why we're here with some urgency this evening?
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, again, my name is John or Jonathan Pottle.
Is the green light on?
It's on now. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yeah, again, my name is John or Jonathan Pottle. I'm an attorney with Eaton Peabody. I practice right at Bangor. I'm here representing, um, the, the buyer, Ventus, in terms of this transaction. I think the, the town manager did a, did a fair job in kind of summarizing kind of some quick back, background. Let me give you a little bit more context. Um, so this, the, the transaction that, uh, we're involved with is not just this specific property. There's multiple properties across different states. So there's a targeted closing of October 29th, so that's why we are very much focused on getting the essentially an assignment documents in place. As the town manager mentioned, that involves a consent, you know, a realable consent from the town of Orno. For a little bit of, for a bit, so that's the, the, the urgency and the timing. So that's why we're asking, uh, to be on the agenda this evening. And first and foremost, thank you so much for doing that. It's very much appreciated. Um, we, I do want to also express my appreciation for both, um, Clint, the town manager, as well as Mitch and their work with the town attorney. Uh, my view is I think there's a few details. I think those got worked out to their satisfaction. They had some, uh, comments, red lines on just the form of the documents. So those have all been incorporated. So from my perspective, they're, they're ready to go. Obviously what we're seeking is authorization from the council as with the form of those documents. And when the town manager goes to actually sign, uh, he will obviously want to make sure all the elements are met to his satisfaction. A simple example is whether there's any special assessments out there. That's a conversation that the town manager has with the assessor for, by way of example. So just, just a little bit of, of background, and I do want to mention, I, I am joined in, uh, the, in remote Zoom, um, world by representatives of both the, the buyer as well as the current operator, who is also going to continue to be the operator. Um, that includes Rob Kazad from Ventus, Jeffrey Gonzalez from Ventus, Brian Story, who's with Grace Management. They're the operator. Both Stephen Hills with CPF Living Community. So all those folks are here and available should you have any questions or you want to hear from them directly. Um, I just want to emphasize, this is not a new TIF. It's not a new, uh, credit enhancement agreement, CEA. It's been around for quite some time. Approximately, I'll say seven years ago, uh, the very same request came through when CPF Living became the new owner. It's the same, same two documents. Uh, it's an assignment and assumption. That's the document where the new owner is, is, is stating contractually, I am going to be bound and assume all the duties, all the obligations, all the terms and conditions of the credit enhancement agreement. Again, that's been in existence for just over 20 years. And the, the TIF certificate that goes with that is just certifying, yes, there is a credit enhancement agreement. We attach that credit enhancement agreement, so it's clear what it is and that there's, and what attorneys love to see, there's no ongoing litigation. Making sure that the current seller is up to date on their tasks, et cetera. So that's the purpose of that certificate. Those are the same two documents that, um, occurred about seven years ago, same form, just different names. One thing I want to make sure I clarify is that, or I think it's helpful, is that the credit enhancement agreement is associated with the Deer Go Pines Inn. That's about the 10 and a half acre parcel. The, I'll call it the inn parcel. The, the cottages or cottage parcel are not part of that. But what, where there's a tie is back when this was originally executed. The town, and I think this is a good choice for the town, helped ensure that if anything on the, the, the Deer Go Pines Inn parcel or the cottage parcel, if that should happen to become tax exempt from a property tax perspective, you have a tax agreement in place, so-called payment in lieu of taxes to make sure that the town is receiving the value of what those tax funds would be. Those would continue to carry forward with this assignment and assumption, just as it did about seven years ago. So the, the urgency is the timing as it relates to the transaction. We are very appreciative that the council put on the agenda, very appreciative that you're willing to review and consider it. Um, as I mentioned, there are folks available. Should you have questions or if you want to hear from them directly, I want to make sure you have all the information that you need, uh, for the consideration.
Great, thank you, John. Um, Eddie, this is, hey, James. Any, this is, uh, that concludes the presentation, though I do think I may have some questions for, uh, particularly the operator. Um, and are there any, if that concludes your presentation, then any questions from members of the public? Okay, I do have some questions. I don't know if anyone, you want to go first or?
Um, sure. Uh, this might be for Clint. Um, how, you said it's been going, or I've heard it was 20, you were 20 years in. Is it a, is this thing indefinitely that this credit enhancement agreement follows this property?
So there's, uh, no, 30 years. So we're about 22 in, so there's eight left. Um, it started in 2003. Um, there are caps. One of the ones, that's why one of the, Article 11 in the assignment references the language because it's based upon, uh, the original price, uh, for development. But again, it's only a 30% TIF district, so I, I don't think on either test it would ever meet, but if at any point we've paid out more in credit enhancement payments than the value of the, of the development itself, the initial investment, it stops. I would say it's either definitely not going to happen if it's the full development price and probably won't happen even if it's at the lower 30% value. But I got to do a lot more research, but I'm very happy with the language that's in there now that shows it, so that that's still out there for conversation if it had to be. And then I think the only other one is, is it say, there's a five-year non-assignment each time it assigns, I think if I'm remembering correctly. And since this is on the not five-year non, there'd only be three years left. And I think that's my intention to present them with a letter that would say that if there's another assignment in the final three years, that we would want a much more detailed analysis of the financial need that created the credit enhancement agreement to make sure that, um, because a sale that close to the end of the credit enhancement agreement would be, um, something I'd want the town to full, more fully vet. Um, with only three years remaining. But again, I don't think there's any expectation they would sell it again. Um, all other things in it are all related to the initial credit enhancement agreement in 2003 and the TIF district that was created. And they, uh, were adhering to the terms that were laid out then. That's the deal we made, so that's what we're reviewing it from, from that perspective.
Thanks. Does a sale trigger, uh, and a potential change if council were to choose to do so or no?
In this case, I would say no. Our attorney says that as long as they've met the standards that were outlined in the credit enhancement agreement, you have to re, you have to be reasonable and assign it. So if it's a reasonable request, like the one I just outlined to you for future ones, I think that's a situation we could. But as far as a choice not to reassign or to change it or alter the terms, it's a 30% credit enhancement agreement. We are assigning it to the new buyers and the new buyers have promised that they're going to operate it the same. They're not changing their staffing. They're going to have the same amount of staff there and they're, and the other one references their payroll. And that their payroll, again, they're promising that they are not adjusting their payroll as a part of this. Um, so satisfied the terms that I thought we could review.
And did I just understand you to say that if we've paid out, if that 30% has been more than the actual value, then we're done doing it? Is that what I understood you're saying? And you, you have those numbers and know that we have not?
We found a number that the development price was approximately 12 million. And again, the question I'd have is since it's only a 30% TIF district, uh, is it a 12 million development value or is it a, is it 30% of 12 million? Either way, it looks like they're going to come in just under that amount. But the total credit enhancement for 30 years is going to be in that 3.5 to 4 million range. And if it's 30% of 12 million, you're talking about 3.75 million. So it's close if we use the 30% rule, but that's again, something we would have to look into. It's a term of the credit enhancement agreement. It's transferring with this credit enhancement agreement anyway. So again, I think we just got to kind of at some point really nail that down. And again, but it would be so close. You're talking maybe the last year, maybe.
Leo has one more.
Just one more. And, and what we will be voting on is giving you authorization to do this. And, and then you will dot the i's and cross the t's and, and what is that?
And you're authorizing this credit enhancement to be, I'm recommending for the review with the attorney and staff that you can transfer this from Deer Go Pines to Ventus Healthcare. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't have.
Small mom and pop shop, bought it wherever they're, you know.
Thank you.
Yep.
If, if I may, just a brief comment. I think, to me, it's, and I think what the town manager described was very helpful and accurate because in terms of the language, you want to make sure we, we, we weren't trying, there's no change in the terms or condition of the credit enhancement agreement. Um, it's, it's not uncommon to have that in terms of the life of a credit enhancement agreement. We're always talking about new value that's brought incentivized through tax increment financing. So all the original assessed value, the taxes are still paid on that. I think that was roughly around $500,000 if you go back 22 years. The, 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 the tax increment financing, the CEA helps incentivize, I think it's around 20 million is the assessed value in current days, give or take. But that's, that's all new value for the town. And it makes sense. If you're looking at project costs, you want a taxpayer, a developer, you know, once they reach, you know, what they put into the project, then the, the incentive would stop because you were incentivizing them to do that actual improvement. So that's a fairly common term. It is a math exercise that the town manager mentioned, maybe towards the end, but you know, that's something that we'll obviously monitor year by year to look at the numbers.
So anybody else have any, I've got a couple, but I'll, I'll go last.
Dan?
Uh, Jacob. Oh, Jacob and Sarah, okay.
So it sounds to me, based on what you're saying, Clint, that us approving this, the only, the only, um, the only rationale we could have for not approving this is if the purchaser, if, if there's not a financial need for the credit of the purchaser.
Well, there, there's, there's language in there about financing and all that they've met those terms. But we just got to, we would want probably a more detailed review if there was another transfer after this one. We don't need it for this one. They've satisfied the terms with the way they're, they're doing the assignment.
So they've, so you all, they, they've satisfied the terms that, or they've satisfied the requirement that they need this or that they would not purchase this without this credit enhancement?
And that's the way it's being presented.
And that's been satisfied?
Yeah.
Okay. So then second question is more conceptual. I mean, generally speaking is, I mean, it sounds like we are in a way obligated to do this. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't. But conceptually, why, it seems like it was brought to us at the last hour and that just did, that from a public pers, out-facing perspective, that it just doesn't feel right that we found out about this
I will give you the.
This weekend.
I'll give you the quick answer from the town, then I'll let him handle on his side. I didn't finish with staff reading and going over this till a little afternoon today. That's why it didn't make the agenda. I was very concerned that we were putting something on the agenda that I just didn't know if we'd get to. Um, they put in a verbal request on Thursday afternoon and an email on Friday morning saying they would hope. So I notified the council of this coming forward, that they would probably be asking for an adjustment to add this. That's your purview?
But you found out about this Thursday and I.
I found out, we had the paperwork Tuesday. And our attorney reviewed it and had it back to us by Thursday at about 11:30 and I was not comfortable with an agenda item. We did have a conversation. We thought it was okay and that we would have another opportunity. They followed up and said, no, we really need this before the 29th of October. And I said, this is going to be tough. You know, we've have no, I mean, transparency, community engagement.
And that's the part that I'm struggling with. Again, it sounds like, you know, this is, I, there's no reason not to do this, but it just, it's this, you know, perceivably, this has been going on for a couple of months. So why, why, why now is this being brought to us with a closing date of next week?
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to do my best to answer that. So I, so I, you know, prior to last week, I did have some discussions. I'll call them heads-up discussions with town staff. This is coming, um, and it's going to be a fast turnaround and that's just because of the nature of the transaction. So I, I, I will say this, I'm very appreciative of what town staff did. Once had the details of the documents, there were some minor, in my view, minor comments that were pretty straightforward to incorporate to match what the expectations were to keep the transaction going forward. If, if this was just the only property involved, I think there'd be more flexibility, but just because there's just multiple properties, that's why I'm asking for this to, to be on the agenda. And ideally, it would have been great to have it on the agenda while we would sort through some of those outstanding items in terms of the dialogue. I absolutely understand why it wasn't put on the agenda, but that's why I made the request. Because I wanted to, the timing need was, was real and urgent, so I really do appreciate. Um, if, I think it's very important to note that there's, there's no change in the use or what's going on there. This, this really is in its purest form, an assignment and assumption without any change in what's actually occurring on the property. It's just a different name of the owner.
And, and I understand that last comment and then I'll get off my soap, soapbox, but, uh, just, I mean, the purchase and sale had to have been signed a lot longer than last, a lot quicker than, long ago than last week. It just, it, this just doesn't, it just doesn't feel very like we're following our process. Again, I, I'm going to vote for it. I, I don't see any reason not to. It just, it doesn't, it just doesn't feel like we're following our transparent process on this.
Dan?
Thanks. Sarah, you have something?
I do. Um, I guess first I want to second what Jacob just said. I also don't feel good about the rushness of this process. And I understand that, you know, for the buyer, it's in their best interest if we could do this tonight. But I'm not sure that it's in the best interest of the town for us to do this tonight. So I'm not sure that I feel comfortable with it and I think I will probably vote against. I would also like to point out that in one of the attachments, I think it's the third one, it's the one called Estoppel at the top, E-S-T-O-P-P-E-L. On page 11 in section 7.2, under assignment, it delineates for us as a town that, um, comp, the company being the current owners cannot sell, transfer or assign to a new company unless all of these conditions are met. Um, in item B, and I, I heard our town manager speak to these, I believe, but I would really like to hear very clearly that all five of these have been completely vetted and that our town staff feels like they've had every minute of time that they need to do this vetting. Um, because it, it isn't true that we automatically have to assign it to the new owner. It's true that we have to do that if it meets these, these conditions in 7.2B. And those conditions include that the property taxes will not go down in any significant way. That the quality of the jobs and the amount of payroll will not go down. That the new company is at least as financially strong as the old company. I have no information on this new company. I hope that the town staff feels like they've had time to vet, but five days is a very short time to vet that kind of information. Also that the company selling is not in default. I'm assuming they are not. We would know that as a town on the agreement. And that the property would continue to have the same impacts on the town, which seems that it would, given that they're not changing the purpose. But as far as vetting the financial status of the new company purchasing and the quality of the jobs and the amount of payroll, I guess I just really want to hear from our town staff that they feel like they have had all the time they need to vet this. If our town staff feels like they've had every second they've need, then I would be willing to vote in favor perhaps, but I really do feel like this is very rushed and it isn't true that it's an automatic thing. There are conditions that have to be met. And I guess I'll ask that of Clint, you know, how confident does town staff feel that they've had the time they need? To me, it feels like town staff has been under a lot of pressure to try to do this very quickly.
What do you think, Clint?
So again, that's kind of what I've been referencing throughout till noon today. We've had a lot of conversations. The biggest was the payroll that we had to have that. It's the, is the, they have promised through the information provided, they're using the exact same company and the same staffing model. That's all the information I have. But if that is accurate, that seems, that is true and would satisfy that. But if that is accurate, that seems, that is true and would satisfy that clause. Again, their management company is available. If you'd like to ask them, I would say that's probably a great question to have them. That was one of the ones that I went through the most. Um, as far as the viability of the company, I'm not going to pretend to be a financial analyst of corporate positions. They are a very large corporate entity with a large reported value. Um, I believe in the excess of thirty five billion or something to that effect. So, you know, our hundred thousand dollar TIF, which did raise the question to me to prove the need financially for this, which is why I don't, I think they have satisfied that for this application. Cause it's a multiple, it's a component of a large transaction. But that's why I also said a future transfer. I think the town should give them a letter that that might be more heavily scrutinized and we want to see more financial information, why the credit enhancement agreement would prevent a transfer if not continued more specifically. But again, not a level of review that needs to be satisfied at this time on this assignment. Cause no one really any gave any notice to that, nor are we in a position under the agreement. For our attorney, they have satisfied, in his opinion, the terms that they presented.
So.
Can I just have one quick?
Go ahead, Sarah.
Just one, just one quick follow up and then I'm done. As far as the agreement around payroll not going down and jobs not being changed, is that something in writing that they have signed? Or is that just a verbal statement made to you?
Uh, what did the letters? I think the letter said that they are maintaining their management company. So that's what I have is in writing that they're maintaining the management services of Grace. Is it Grace?
Grace Management.
Grace Management.
So I guess I, I would like to hear from whoever's here to speak then about that, because I don't think the same management services necessarily mean the same staffing and payroll. And I do think that's important to people in our town.
Yeah. John, can we, could we bring him in? Mitch, the, the management company? Is it Grace? Is that the name?
Yes, Grace.
Brian, Brian's story. And with Brian too, I, the extent that Brian could speak to, would there be any changes that residents would notice in terms of the change or any transfer if they don't expect, you know, ideally, you know, no detrimental changes in any way, to the extent that Brian could speak to that and give us a little, give us some assurances for those from Diego Pines who are with us tonight in person or watching from home.
Absolutely. Good, good evening. Thank you. Thank you, counselors for your time this evening. We, we certainly appreciate it. Absolutely. I can talk a little bit, having been involved with the Diego Pines community for the last six years, I can talk a little bit about.
Are you on site, Brian? I'm sorry. Are you, are you in a, or no, are you somewhere else?
I am remote. I had, um, I had been very active early on with, with Diego Pines, but right now I'm remote. Um, I, I, I'm the senior vice president of all operations for Grace Management. And, and worked directly with the Diego Pines community since the original transition. You know, briefly, you know, Diego has and, and will remain home for, you know, roughly a hundred and seventy five residents. As, as noted earlier, you know, there's no change in, um, in, in, in what we're doing in, in the, in the day to day course of business. There's no change to us as the employer, and I think that's very important. You know, we, we remain throughout this transaction, we remain the employer. So for the hundred or so associates that, that, that currently work at Diego Pines, you know, about roughly ten percent of those are salaried, about ninety percent of those um, are, are, are a mix of, of full time and hourly wage associates. All of those positions, all of the services that we provide to those hundred and seventy five residents remain the same. There is no change there. There's no change to wage, benefit or staffing pattern. So we expect that to continue. I think it's worth noting too, that, um, you know, we can say that with a level of confidence because this is, uh, this is not a new relationship for us with Ventas. We've, we've, we've worked with them in the past. We continue to work with them. Um, and so we know them as an owner, uh, we know their, their thesis, their perspective. And, uh, there's somebody who's, who's, uh, belief system and, and sort of general course of business is aligned with ours as well. So we expect no change.
Okay. Everyone satisfied with, with that?
I, I have another, just to make sure I understand Clint, what, what it is you're referring to, because it, there, there does, it, obviously this, this has been a quick turnaround and, and staff really is, should be commended for jumping through the hoops they have jumped through. But you've said a couple of times that if, if this were to transfer again, then we'd, we'd want to do a deeper. And I'm not really super clear on what you're talking about there, but it feels to me like you're saying, wow, we're, we're kind of rushing this too much. I mean, this is too rushed to do this this time. But if we did it again, we'd want to do this. And that, I, I, could you maybe provide a little more clarification?
And where the credit enhancement agreement's worth approximately a million dollars for the remaining eight years, give or take. Depends on what the actual taxes are, the mill rate and the valuation. But based on current assessed values and, and the payments they're making, it's about a million dollars in this credit enhancement agreement over the next eight years. They have to keep it for five years. They can't transfer it. So there'll only be three years. So I can understand completely how a real estate transaction for financing purposes would need a million dollar asset to pull the deal together. What I am saying is, is the next time you'll be down to three years and you're talking no more than three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. I'd like to see someone prove to the town of Orno that this deal can't go through without a three hundred and seventy five thousand dollar credit enhancement agreement. That would be a reasonable request. And if they can prove it, then they, we would reasonably still have to meet the assignment. But I would like to see that proven because that's a much smaller dollar amount on what would probably be a multimillion dollar land transaction. Why is Orno's credit enhancement agreement on its fourth transfer still necessary? So that's what I'd like to put in writing so that the next council, and if it ever happened again, could actually review that item, because it would, it was the first question that came to my mind. How many times will this transfer in thirty years? And this credit enhancement agreement still be needed?
Okay.
Dan?
So go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah, sorry, for Brian, I still have a question. Part of my question was answered, but not all of it. So my question remains, where in writing does something state that payroll is not changing and staffing is not changing? Where is that in writing anywhere? I haven't seen it in any document that I've been presented.
Thanks, Sarah. I, I'm probably not the best person to answer the question about the, the in writing. I would defer to, to, um, counsel uh, at the meeting. Um, I, I, my, my comment is, is, is just around the normal course of day to day business and no change. Uh, no change in, in the services that are delivered or how we handle or how we staff, uh, to meet those, to meet those needs.
Clint, is there anything in writing you've seen?
I, I have the letter from Ventus that I did provide out, at least I thought I'd provided that out to counsel. I will double check. Um, but it's the one that says that Ventus is also in the business of senior living. No material changes are proposed to this, part of this acquisition for the uses and operations. The existing management company will be retained, so there will be no operational disruptions or operations will continue as historically just under new ownership. Then it goes on specific about the inn, there will be no changes to the property. So again, that's the clause that I thought, and the attorney agreed, they've met that component. So I was like, all right, I'm satisfied.
When did this letter come through?
The one that came to me late Friday and I thought was part of the package I sent out to the council. Let me take a look.
It probably was, I'm, it, it probably was.
A lot happened on Friday, so I'm not going to promise it did. I can check my emails to make sure. It's dated October sixteenth. Yep, that's the one. That's all I have.
Okay, but nothing that specifically references payroll or positions. It just says no operational changes. Okay, I'm not sure that I think that that meets the standard in this assignment section, but if our lawyer thinks it does, I feel pretty uncomfortable about it. So I just, I have to say that, you know, people's jobs are important in our town and, you know, knowing that that isn't going to change is important to me.
All right. Thanks, Sarah. Matt, did you have something?
I'd also in, uh, if, if they did not follow through with this and we found out that like, you know, ten percent of the staff was cut in a year. Is that grounds for taking the TIF away?
It would be a material change in their credit enhancement agreement and we'd have grounds to end it.
All right.
So just, just a brief comment. So in the, in the transmittal letter that was provided dated October sixteenth, that included as enclosures, the proposed assignment and assumption.
You speak up a little bit, John, I'm sorry.
Sorry. No, thank you. So in the transmittal letter dated October sixteenth, that's been referred to, there is a specific reference to payroll and types of jobs. If you look at the credit enhancement agreement, it, it does state that the anticipated payroll and types of jobs are expected to be the same or greater. And, and that's referenced directly in the letter. It's tied specifically to the retention of Grace Management, who is the ongoing manager. They're the employer on the property. So there, there, there's no change proposed at all. So that's, that's carrying forward. Uh, so that's, that's where I, based on that, plus, you know, what Brian had provided here this evening, which is recorded and out in the public domain. I, I think that's fairly a representation of payroll is going to stay the same, type of jobs is going to be the same. That's intended to carry forward, which I think matches the credit enhancement agreement terms.
And the credit enhancement agreement I can provide to you, but that does promise they have to do it. So in this assignment, they're also agreeing to the terms of the original credit enhancement agreement. So it's kind of assigning the contractual obligations of the new entity to us as well. So that's kind of where my comfort level really came in.
I'm going to, go ahead, Matt.
And then I just, so one, how big is this deal and when did Diego Pines get put into it? Like, do you know when this was, like, how many properties are we talking about? And when, or if you can't say that, when, when was Diego Pines added to this? Was it last week or was it? Or has it been on the docket for a long time?
Yeah, I, I will be the first. I don't know the specific timing of that. I know it was contemplated to be part of the transaction. I believe the purchase and sale agreement actually was not actually executed until over six, October sixteenth. Clearly there was a, a form of that in advance. So it's, it's, it's at least several weeks, but when I became involved, one of the first things I did was pick up the phone and just give a call to say, this is what's going on. It's anticipated. It's coming down the pipeline. It'll be a, it'll be a rather quick turnaround. Uh, so I was trying to give the heads up. Once had all the details, transmitted those as quickly as we could. I think staff did a fantastic job, um, particularly on a holiday week, which, you know, obviously has a time crunch. But my view, I think the, the town's own legal counsel reviewed the form of the documents, came back with the comments. We incorporated those. I think they're in their substantial form. Again, what we're really asking for is authorization for the town manager. He's satisfied all those met that he can sign so that the transaction can go forward.
All right. Thank you, John. I got a couple of things and then we're going to call a vote. Is that all right? Okay. Why don't you go ahead now? I kind of want to sum it up. I got a big.
I know. I, I just want to, I just want to kind of go back to was it, because I, sorry, I can't pull up the document right now. But there was it five stipulations Sarah mentioned or six or seven stipulations? And, and is one of them that there has to be a material impact to, that would, you, you said a million dollars over five years, you, you, is what you were just talking about? Is that, is that one of those or no? That's separate.
It's just, there's, the financing is part of the credit enhancements base agreement that that's necessary to make the deal. They were being enticed in two thousand and three and we were wanting them to build here. So the credit enhancement agreement was needed in order for that project to occur. So that's what's being transferred yet again. So what I'm saying is at this point, you, the next time you'll be at the very, very end. Is this still necessary? Now that we're looking at what's occurred, is it still a needed component? With eight years to go, I don't think we're in a reasonable position to ask that question.
But that's, it would, it's roughly two hundred thousand a year is what.
One fifty, uh, one thirty fives and change, I believe, was the, the bill this year.
And, and I have no idea what the size of the deal is. Probably we shouldn't, aren't, can't know or, or wouldn't know. But I'm, I'm just back to that question. Is it, is that material enough for, I mean, obviously every, every bit.
I'm meaning the reasonableness for the credit enhancement agreement in Orno. The bigger land deal, yes, that's obviously component. But again, at a thirty year TIF, the next time they do it, there's only three years left. Ten percent of the total agreement. Is it really necessary for that project to sustain itself? To be a viable entity? And that's the question I think we, I want to reserve the town's right for, for eight years from now. Again, not something that we can argue today, but something I want you aware of, that I will be adding to this now that, if you approve it.
So it's not something you could question today? Is that what you just said?
Do not believe we, yes, I am saying from the conversations with the attorney, if we brought that up, that would definitely invite the question of whether we're being reasonable as a town for the assignment of this agreement. It's eight years of thirty still remaining. It's reasonable for them to ask for that at this point.
Thank you.
All right. So, um, we have, we have a second, we, you know, we can act tonight. Or we could, um, call a special session and come a special council meeting between now and the, you know, a week from now would be the twenty eighth. And that would still give John his time. I, I'm inclined to, to act tonight because I feel like the town managers told us that more time and more due diligence is not necessary at this time. They've had a chance to dot their i's and cross their t's and tip of the hat to them for the, the work they did and our town attorney in, in a short amount of time. I feel like because of the work, we did outreach to residents in the Diego Pines and created some awareness that otherwise we couldn't happen. I mean, I don't love that, you know, people find out about the transfer, the pending sale, purchase and sale from our agenda and the Orno Town Council reaching out to residents. I'm glad we did it. They heard from us and have had a chance to ask questions and become informed and be here tonight. I don't think we'll get more people between now and a week from now, if we call a special town council meeting. So to the extent that I feel like we've given the town staff time and we've, you know, through extraordinary effort, we've given the town staff time, the town staff have, have done their diligence and we've been able to do outreach to people most affected by this agreement. I feel comfortable moving forward tonight and we'll count on John to let everyone know that Orno is open for business. Well, assuming the vote goes the way I think it might go, but.
Dan, can I ask a question? For those of us who don't know, what outreach was done to folks at Diego Pines and on what day was that outreach done?
I did it over the weekend. I talked with the president of the Diego Pines Board of Resident Board and they had a meeting and talked about it with their neighbors. Is that right? Is Meredith, Meredith's here, right? Are you Meredith? Yep. So I'm sorry, what?
Dan, is someone speaking? Cause they're not on mic.
Yeah, yeah. Meredith Ayers, right, is the president of the, the board for the, the homeowners association. Yep. Corporation. And yeah, they did not hear directly from the management company or the buyer or the seller prior to this being on our agenda and the outreach that we did, I did on Friday.
I have one other question, Dan. When you say we have an option, we have an option to vote now, you're saying we have an option to call a special meeting this week. Do we not simply have an option to not move on this until our next meeting in November? Understand it's inconvenient to the buyer, but we have that option, correct?
We absolutely do. You don't have to vote. You know, you can vote however you want and we can do, you know, whatever we want to do. So. Okay. Any other questions or comments, Rob?
I, I guess, um, if I'm understanding what you've brought up Clint about the fact that we would have the option if there was a staffing change or there were other material changes to the situation that we, we would be able to withdraw this, uh, agreement, agreement. I feel like that push, I mean, I've really found valuable your question, Sarah. I thought uh, if they weren't answerable, then I would be right with you in how you were describing your, your reticence to vote. I think because we have that ability and we will likely have great interest in keeping up with what the material changes or lack of changes would be. I'm inclined to vote for this only because we have that ability. We have the, it's basically, it's, it's a, a strong incentive for them to continue as the other organization has been operating. So that, that's my understanding right now. And that's, that's sort of where I'm heading.
Okay. Go ahead, Leo.
So the order is order authorizing town manager to execute a credit enhancement agreement, transfer to Ventas Healthcare Realty LLC from Diego Pines. Now we're authorized, if, I'm, I'm just trying to understand if we, if we give the authorization and the town manager finishes the due diligence and decides, okay, no, we need more that. We're not saying he has to sign it, correct with this? We're saying that you're going to finish, complete any due diligence that's needed before you would do that, correct?
I'm saying as I'm here tonight, I think we've done it. I'm pretty confident it would happen. But yes, I would not find it and tell them one hundred percent certain that we're, we're there and comfortable. I'm very, very close. In fact, as of late, you know, noonish today, I think we'd addressed all my questions. We have followed up with the attorney for the third time. We do have some paperwork to do outside of these agreements to process with them, but no, I'm comfortable with it.
So I, just, I'm inclined to support it for that reason alone. That's, so thanks.
Why don't we see where we are then? Is anybody, you all set? Are we ready to vote? All right. Let's call a roll on this. See, see how it shakes out. Counselor Lawrie?
In favor.
Counselor Marks?
Opposed.
Counselor Demerits in favor. Counselor Kenny?
In favor.
Counselor Powers?
Opposed.
Counselor Baker?
I gotta be honest, I'm struggling here, um, because it really, I understand we want to be open to business, we want to be business friendly. But this also just feels like this is a national investment fund that is pushing through something on the little town of Orno, which just, it sits wrong with me, but we want to be open for business, so in favor.
Okay, um, that was, I didn't, I wasn't even counting, is that four to two? Okay, I was counting a little bit, it was four to two, passed with Counselor Marks and Counselor Powers voting opposed. So we're all set, thank you for coming and those who, um, the great work by staff to get this to us. They bent over backwards, they didn't have to, but they did it and appreciate that they did. Thank you to the residents who, um, took some time to be aware and be with us tonight. And, uh, we'll be hoping that Deere Gold Pines remains a critical, important and valued member of our community.
Dan, can I just?
Yeah.
Say, I, the, the only reason, the reason why I am opposed to this is I would, I think it's in our best interest to have enough time and that a large corporation who's making some sort of business deal in here, I want them here, I really do. I want to see, um, you know, people, um, making a living here. But I also don't want to set a precedent where other businesses are, are thinking, oh, well, if we just, you know, jam it in last minute next week, that maybe we can get this through. And so, um, I in the future would like to have it a little bit longer on these. And I think it's better for the staff, so.
No, I agree, I mean, Friday, they were working on Friday and town offices are open on Friday, so, but.
And I guess, Dan, I just would like to say that I would also have preferred that the residents had more than a couple of days at Deere Gold to know that this was gonna, it wasn't even on our agenda on Thursday. So in the end, my vote no is that this wasn't, I mean, this was added to our agenda at the last minute. It does affect a number of people in our town. So I would like to see us avoid adding to agendas at that stage when we can. And I appreciate all the work staff did, they did an amazing job. So zero commentary on staff, thank you.
Yep, same here, thank you, thank you, Clint.
All right, um, yeah, come back, are we on? Let's do two four. Yeah, let's see that, that's easy. All right, we're gonna do, uh, order twen- uh, twenty-four, two, four, zero. Order accepting the bids received from Caldwell Diesel Services of Ellsworth, Maine for $51,563.57 for a public works truck chassis and for Viking, from Viking, is it Sivs? Seves? Sit, which one?
Yes.
Seves. You nodded yes to both, Seves.
Whichever you want.
Yeah, whatever you want. Chair's prerogative, Viking Seves of Lewiston, Maine for $101,262 for the dump body plows and gear for a total cost of $152,825.57, funding $150,000 from ARPA and $2,825.57 from Capital Equipment. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Bill?
So it's replacing two trucks, we're getting rid of one 10-wheel, it's got about 103,000 miles on it. The second vehicle we're trading in, uh, we've had nothing but trouble with for the last couple of years, so we're getting rid of that as well. It's about the same size truck. It's a smaller single axle truck, it's gonna be handled in town here, so it'll handle some of the smaller roads. So it'll have a wing and have a plow, sander, all of that put in it.
Okay, any comments from the public on this action item? Any questions or concerns from council members? Okay, we'll take a vote, thanks, Bill. Counselor Lawrie?
In favor.
Counselor Marks?
In favor.
Counselor Demerits in favor, Counselor Kenny?
In favor.
Counselor Powers?
In favor.
Counselor Baker?
Favor.
It passes six to zero. Now we'll take order twenty-four, two, four, one, order accepting the bid received from Mechanical Services of Bangor, Maine for $38,250 for the removal and replacement of the existing boiler at the Orno Water Pollution Control Facility with funds drawn from WPCF Capital Facilities Reserve. Chris?
What? I'm Kirsten.
All right, tell them I missed them, go ahead.
So basically they've had a boiler, they, they had patched back together, uh, it's still leaking. So we decided to go up to full bid and this is our full bid price. It was low, it was low bid out of three bids that we had.
Okay, any comments from the public on this action item? Any questions or comments from the council? Order twenty-four, two, forty-one, Counselor Lawrie?
Oh, damn it.
Motion.
Again, okay.
All right, did we get them? Got them, thank you. Counselor Lawrie?
In favor.
Counselor Marks?
In favor.
Counselor Demerits in favor, Counselor Kenny?
In favor.
Counselor Powers?
In favor.
Counselor Baker?
Favor.
Okay, this passes, thank you. Oh, hey, this was my favorite. Order twenty-four, two, four, two, order naming the street connecting Mill Street and the municipal parking lot at Zero Pine Street between 15 and 19 Mill Street as Bruce Farnsworth Way with a dedication event to be planned in collaboration with the Farnsworth family for the spring of 2025. Could I get a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, uh, Leo, do you want to present this one?
Uh, sure, so this is, um, most, most, I think, everyone in the, well, more than the country probably it feels like knows, knew, knew Bruce Farnsworth, um, who took over Pat's Pizza from his dad, from his father, uh, Pat. And Bruce passed away about a year or so ago and through some conversations with family, we talked about, um, trying to do, do something to commemorate, um, him for his longevity in this town and, and Pat's, I mean, Pat's is obviously synonymous with, with Orno. And as a longstanding, family-run restaurant, it seemed appropriate. We talked a little bit about it at the last meeting, um, we were looking at a parking lot and then, um, James Garrity actually came forward with a really great idea, um, to, uh, consider that, um, the, the str- the alleyway between Pat's and, uh, Margarita's and, uh, the Bear Boo. And I think, uh, from speaking with the family, they're, they're thrilled with the, with that concept. And, um, I think it'll be a really great tribute to, uh, a really important piece of our community for the last seventy-five, eighty years or, I'm not, actually not sure his age when he passed, but he was, he's been at Pat's Pizza probably since he was born, so. So appreciate having this on here.
Any comments from the public on this item? James?
James Jackson-Samborn, resident of Orno, I think it's a great idea, my one comment, uh, is, uh, or, and maybe it's a question you don't have to answer it, but ask yourselves if during the Route Two and all of the parking and, uh, not parking it, but, uh, you know what I'm saying, the movement of vehicles, if that becomes a walkable only, pedestrian only throughway, some sort of action like that, this would be sticky, uh, in a, in essence, it would stay that named after him as Farnsworth Way pedestrian alley or something. I think that that would be good as well. I know there's different conversations around that alley and I wouldn't want to name something only for it to go away.
Yep.
Thanks for, for that comment, James, and I, I think it's, would still be a way, obviously, you know. So that, then, that's a good way, good reason to be using way, I guess, and not street.
Okay, Rob, did you have something?
Yeah, uh, actually, I mean, it's kind of in line with what James was raising, uh, a while ago, I don't remember who here was on council when it was last discussed, but an idea had been raised a while ago to council of the potential of that area being a green space. And if, if we were to discuss that again, I guess I was just going to say that I would, I would love for us to make sure that the name carries forward to whatever that green space became.
That's how I think about it too, in terms of, you know, the name, the name lives on as a legacy, as part of a legacy, so. Any more other comments? Okay, we will take a roll call vote, uh, order twenty-four, we, we moved this already, right? Order twenty-four, four, two, four, two, Counselor Lawrie?
Favor.
Counselor Marks?
In favor.
Counselor Demerits in favor, Counselor Kenny?
In favor.
Counselor Powers?
In favor.
Counselor Baker?
In favor.
Excellent, that passes unanimously, thank you and Leo, thank you for your leadership on this one. Order, sorry, James, for keeping you so long, order twenty-four, two, four, three, order authorizing the town manager to execute an agreement with Haley Ward for the Orno Public Library renovation and building expansion as the owner and the OPLF as owner representatives for schematic design development and construction documents in the amount of $537,300. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion on top of, we, I guess I'm not gonna ask for a presentation since we talked about it so long unless we think we need to? Come on up. Yeah.
James Jackson-Samborn, president of the Orno Public Library Foundation. Two things that actually I just wanted to mention, uh, one in relation to a question that Leo, um, was raising around what happens if we agree to this and all of a sudden the foundation says no, the town's on the hook, we don't have money for it. Um, one item that you will see in the I, A, I, A, I might get that wrong, but the architect's, uh, boilerplate is, um, are in section nine, covers, um, suspension and termination. And you can look through all the different portions of suspension and termination, uh, but within five days notice, um, if I'm reading this accurately, we are able to terminate. Um, and we would be on the hook only for the activities that have happened up to that date or other expenses that have been occurred, in- incurred up to that date. So, and there are also, also a suspension, um, category there too. So if our fundraising completely dries up, which is not going to, um, then, you know, we have ways to not put the town on the hook. So I hope that makes you feel better, Leo.
Thank you, appreciate it, James.
Um, and then a question, uh, that Sarah Marks had asked about 7.5% contingency in the budget. There are actually, if you look at the budget, which is number C in that, there are two contingency lines, each for 7.5%. One is a bid contingency, one is a building contingency. So it actually, the contingency that is budgeted and baked into the budget is higher than 10%. So it's two 7.5% contingencies baked into that budget. That's a separate thing from the 10% contingency that Clint was talking about, which is around value engineering once everything happens.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, James. Any other discussion on this item? Okay, Counselor Lawrie? We got that one already.
We're all having memory issues today.
Mostly me, but.
I started, it's catching.
All right.
In favor.
Counselor Marks?
In favor.
Counselor Demerits in favor, Counselor Kenny?
In favor.
Counselor Powers?
In favor.
Counselor Baker?
In favor.
Great, that passes unanimously. Order twenty-four, two, four, four, order authorizing the town manager to execute bidding and construction administration services with Haley Ward Incorporated in the amount of $169,300, could I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Kim, uh, Counselor Lawrie?
In favor.
Counselor Marks?
In favor.
Counselor Demerits in favor, Counselor Kenny?
In favor.
Counselor Powers?
In favor.
Counselor Baker?
Favor.
Yeah, that passes unanimously. Order twenty-four, two, four, five, order approving the town manager's closure of the town office on December 19th, 2024 for safety day training, department training and the staff appreciation luncheon, could I have a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Clint, do you want to present to this or just kind of what it says, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, locked it in.
Got questions, I'm here.
Any questions? Okay, Counselor Lawrie?
In favor.
Counselor Marks?
In favor.
Counselor Demerits in favor, Counselor Kenny?
Favor.
Counselor Powers?
In favor.
Counselor Baker?
Favor.
Excellent, order twenty-four, two, four, five passes unanimously. Order twenty-four, two, four, six, order authorizing the town manager to enter into an agreement with Tilly Lasky of McCoy Museum Solutions, is that how you pronounce it? MMS related to creating a Wabanaki interpretive plan and to expend $20,175 to execute the proposal, could I have a motion?
Motion.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Clint, do you want to kick this off and then I see James is here?
Yeah, so you had a presentation from James on this interpretive plan, requested a proposal, we've received that. It's, uh, it again was shared to be in the range of 15 to 20,000, this is at 20,175. Shared that in your packets, it outlines what they will do and what it includes for those services. It meets the council goal and the initiative of the funding you set aside in your budget, so we brought it forward per your request. James is here, I think if you have more detailed question. Tilly, I'm glad it's a little later, she was gonna make herself available by six, I don't know if she's on, she is there, okay, and she's online as well.
Hi, Tilly. Um, do you want to just give us a quick overview of what's in your presentation and as much for the public as those who maybe haven't had a chance to?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Thanks for joining us.
Can't get my video going, but, um, so the interpretive plans are really powerful documents that, um, are basically living documents that embrace Wabanaki leadership and will help move your, um, town forward with best practices regarding the Penobscot Nation. And we like to think of these plans like strategic plans and that they're a long-term investment and a springboard for future funding for your town. And it's also a way, um, to connect and build bridges between the communities. So once we, um, do the strategic, or do the, um, Wabanaki interpretive plan, we don't just leave you, we, um, leave resources and stay connected to make sure that, um, things will continue to move forward. So the plan that we have put forth is, um, for me really to do most of the administration and the heavy lifting as far as the plan goes and to work with four Penobscot, um, advisors and specialists to help us craft some strategies, visioning goals and, um, in order to outline the document for you. And so I'm happy to answer questions, I know James is there as well and he is clearly one of the people who, um, is part of the team.
Great, thank you, Tilly, for being with us and sorry for things moving along. James, you want to join us too? Come on up. If you could introduce yourself.
There we go. Um, I just wanted to add that, um, of the, I believe, four advisors that are there, uh, one of them is, is a resident of Orno. One of the things we really seek to do is, you know, this is the town of Orno and if there are any indigenous people that live within the town, then, uh, we want to bring, bring those people in to the fold. And so it isn't just, you know, a bunch of Penobscots from Old Town and Indian Islanders, uh, John Banks will be coming in, uh, to work with us on this, um, on this project.
Excellent. Any comments from anyone in the public? Any questions or from members of the council? Counselor Kenny?
Yes, um, so James was here before and we were talking about signs, this is completely different initiative, correct?
I think it's aligned, but different, I mean, it's part of, uh, Sarah, you can join me here on this too, right? But it's part of the discussions we've been having and related to the, the apology letter we wrote, um, but it'd been a year ago. Almost a year ago that we sent to the Penobscot Nation. And I think it's part of that initiative, it's part of that 50,000, it's funded as part of that $50,000.
And we also, I mean, th- this is just more detail and I think something we very much did discuss at the previous meeting when James was last joining us.
Well, I guess that's, that's what I'm trying to understand, I, I, for some reason, I was, I was thinking we did, we approved 10,000 to design signs and 10,000 for installing signs, we're talking about 20,175. That's, is that additional to those signs? It is, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, uh, and that's, and this is all from that 50 that was allocated.
That's how it's budgeted so far.
Okay, that's what, that's what I'm trying to understand, thank you.
Yep, any other comments or questions?
Because I'm just saying, I'm excited to see this move forward.
Yeah, I want to thank, um, Sarah for her, the work she did, you know, a year ago, but also, um, since Clint joined us and working with James Francis, I, I think it's, I've really been pleased with the steps we've taken in the past several month, past few months, so thank you for that. Okay, let's get a vote, Counselor Lawrie? Thanks, James.
In favor.
Counselor Marks?
In favor.
Counselor Demerits in favor, Counselor Kenny?
In favor.
Counselor Powers?
In favor.
Counselor Baker?
In favor.
Excellent, that passes unanimously, Tilly, we look forward to working with you on this, thank you. All right, order, now we need to do the one we order twenty-four, two, three, three, we gotta pull the one back for the, um, Thai Orchard, right? Okay, let's, can I get an order putting twenty-four, two, three, three, uh, on the table?
So moved, seconded.
Okay, that's an order approving a class one malt liquor, wine and spirits liquor license and victuaries license for S&amp;M Corporation DBA Thai Orchard, 28 Mill Street. And I, we have an amendment to this, Clint, is that what we're gonna do? Okay. So approving a conditional class one malt liquor, could I get a motion?
Approved, or I mean, motioned.
Yeah, easy.
Second.
All right, we got a motion, uh, to make it approving a conditional, um, we're gonna vote on the motion, uh, on the amendment and then we're gonna vote on the underlying, okay? So Counselor Lawrie, we're voting on the amendment?
In favor.
Counselor Marks?
In favor. In favor.
Council de merits in favor, Council Kenny?
In favor.
Council Powers?
In favor.
Council Baker?
In favor.
Okay, that passed unanimously, and now we're gonna vote on order twenty four, two, three, three, the order as amended. Council Larway?
In favor.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Council de merits in favor, Council Kenny?
In favor.
Council Powers?
In favor.
Council Baker?
Favor.
Yeah, that passed unanimously. That ends our action items. And now we're on to, wait for, is that it?
That's not it.
Oh, committee, okay, council committee reports, we're gonna have a community development committee discussion about Orono Festival Days, it's now ten minutes of one AM in Germany, just, and we have a couple of executive session items to get to as well, so just to keep that in mind.
So um, there has been some um, both, um, some discussions with university people, and there's also been um, e- excitement in the community about maybe having some sort of fall festival. Um, I am interested in seeing um, Orono become a college town that, that um, integrates the college atmosphere um, and excitement, maybe getting pep band out here um, in the fall sometime, or at some point, get people to celebrate the teams at the U who are um, who are um, um, doing well. There's excitement, actually, with some college um, administration and some students, we've talked to students at um, the Wilson Center, and they would really like to uh, have some sort of festival downtown where the um, college bands play, which would be free for us, except for setting it up, but um, so, so there's this, there's um, in the past, the Orono days um, had a very family-friendly component to it, and there's also some excitement of having a, a, a college-type festival, too. So we have two kind of things going, maybe they can be melded, maybe not, um, and so um, I would, I'm interested as um, somebody on the, on the DEIB committee of um, making sure that our college students feel like they belong here as much as possible. Um, and a, a member of the community of Orono, so maybe some of these things can dovetail together, and it's just a kickoff for, for saying that, and I will be done because it's getting late in Germany.
It's okay.
Council, Council Kenny?
Yeah, I've, I think Orono Festival Days has, has come up for the last five years, and I, yeah, I feel like, I feel, I, I don't, I, I would like to, I guess I would probably lean more on the community and then, but when it's that fall, like it was in the past, again, I, I really like the, you know, zero to a hundred-year-old folks that actually used to come out for this and just be seen in town, so I like the community aspect, I like that it's in the fall because we did have students come down. I, I'd like to, I would like for it to be town of Orono centered, but I'd like for us to do something, I support uh, what Matt was just saying, and I would like to understand how we can make something like this happen um, as a community, uh, because the uh, what are we, not Arts-a-palooza, but that was a, that was an amazing event, we learned last two weeks ago that that's different, enough different, uh, that we um, she couldn't incorporate something like this, I would like to ex- do some exploratory uh, on this to, to see how we make it happen.
Does it make sense for us to kick this into our goal discussion in terms of, since we're gonna have two hours? Yeah, and then, I mean, it's gotta be resourced, right? You know, it's, people have to come forward.
You have to have some sort of vision together as what, what's to happen, so I think this would be a good discussion item, but it's gonna take longer than tonight.
Yeah, and.
Sarah, is that all right with you?
Oh, yeah, totally fine. I just wanted to say that, you know, I think Leo's right, that the past events really targeted all ages zero to a hundred, and it's also true that a lot of the energy and labor and stuff that wasn't staff labor for that came from the university. There were a lot of university students that ran many of those activities um, when I was early here, you know, and fifteen years back when I first moved to town. So I think both of those things are true, and they can be combined.
All right, so why don't we, unless there's a strong move to decide something and volunteer, we could, Tom just left the room, we could volunteer him to do it on his first day, but um, why don't we make it a part of our goal-setting discussion? And then I do think if we're gonna, if we're gonna do something that, if the volunteers aren't coming forward and it's a town, we have to think about how we resource it. Um, either, you know, externally, or how we, it's like we did with the Orono Arts Fest. Um, dude, I think that's important. So we'll do it in part of the goal-setting discussion. Okay, thank you, Matt. Um, on the council chairs update on committee work plans, it feels like, um, I put this on thinking there'd be more to talk, it feels like the committee work is coming together. Did finance have a meeting, was it today?
We did, yep.
Yep. Um, so I, that feels like things are coming together, will, the ordinance committee will set its date, we've got a plan, uh, Matt, the community development committee has a meeting coming up, and I know, Sarah, you're staying busy with, so it feels like everyone's moving, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to say we should maybe announce any meetings that are happening that are not on the schedule we approved. Um, we voted for the regular monthly schedule, but I think some committees are perhaps meeting this month on a different date in order to get an October meeting in. I know the kneecap committee is meeting this Thursday um, at nine AM, which is not our regular second Thursday of the month, so heads up, we're meeting this Thursday at nine, for anyone who wants to know. I don't know if any other committees meeting, you know, off their schedule this month, but it might be good to announce if they are.
I think that's the only one we have. All right, well, thank you for everyone coming together around the schedules for the committee, the committee work and, and being available, that's important stuff. Um, next up is item eleven, which is the town manager's report, Clint?
Uh, just really quick, just a notice to the council, I signed the side agreement with the firefighters to add that to their holiday, everything else, it was included to automatically incorporate, there's needed a side agreement.
That's Juneteenth?
Yeah, Juneteenth, yep. Um, Westwood Crosswalk, RFB update there, received an email this morning. Had a chance to glance at it from MDOT, they're working with us, it's gotta be part of a broader plan. Um, the one short thing to just share is, is that the CDS funding they received cannot be broken into chunks, it has to be done as a thoughtful plan, but they have a goal to get something back to us, I would estimate in about forty-five days. You know, late November, early December kind of timeframe, that's what they indicated in the email, so we'll hear more about this very soon. It won't happen fast, I think if anything, just understand the timeline, it's a collaborative effort, and it's a neat thing to do, but if we want to use funding that's there, we gotta work with that and what those requirements are. Um, the uh, Thanksgiving dinner is planned for uh, November twenty-first, and this is something that we're reinstilling it back to the original intent and values with the fire, uh, police department spearheading it, Parks and Rec uh, collaborating as the, as their services for the community. But we need volunteers, and the council's always been very excited to participate in this. And I would assume this council wants to carry on those traditions and help us out in any way we can, whether it's cooking, cleaning, et cetera. But we'll be in touch or donating. Um, I was going the other day to see cases and cases of cranberry in the, in the town office, and then it dawned on me that was a donation, somebody donated the cranberries to us for cranberry sauce, so again, that's just a heads up that that's coming, staff is coordinating that as we speak. Um, Brownies Park, new access trail. So the handrails are not in, and I met with Parks and Rec and Public Works, and I want them to look at this again. Before we invest, it was about a six to seven thousand dollar item to put the handrails in. They put in the additional trail, it is closer to the parking lot, it does get them in closer where we want, and we'll prevent the other one. It may have, the grade is not as great as we had hoped, it's a little bit steeper, so rather than investing the handrails this winter, before this winter, I wanted the team to come together and take another look at it for next year and see what other options they may have. So that's the update, so if there's any questions or people ask, that's the, the status there. Um, initial budget update, working on that with the staff and the team for meetings in December, just wanted to let you know that we're coordinating, I've had meetings with, for capital investment planning, stuff with uh, the Orono wastewater. So I'll be back with more with you on that as that comes forward, just wanted to update that we're progressing. F's done, you did it. Um, that was how I was letting you know, because we found out last week it was gonna be coming, so I was gonna let you know it's coming, but now we did it. Um, HR audit with Lori Bouchard is tomorrow, um, she's gonna be reviewing all our files. Uh, that one's there. And the agenda for ten twenty-one, what was uh, this agenda, I will update that based upon information to make sure it's clear and noted, that we added an item, and I'll put those attachments both on the added item now that we did it, and in the minutes, but I want to make sure that people know and have access to the documents that were available, but I will not be having staff, once we set those, noon on Thursday, that's the end.
Yeah.
We cannot keep coming at fewer things, so that was where I drew that line. John, thank you for understanding why we did it. But again, we only have a two-day turnaround, there is a weekend, but only a two-day business day, and a weekend in between, and I don't want people to have to think they have to keep checking it. So that's where we just kind of went that route with it, but we will update it now after the fact for people that want to see it. That's it.
Okay.
Clint, uh, what is the, do you say, did you say the date for the Scott Scripture Memorial Thanksgiving Dinner?
Did you say? November twenty-first, I get that right? Tell me I got that right, November twenty-first.
Excellent. Um, okay, we don't have any public petitions, thirteen future agenda items and council requests for supporting items. Uh, the one thing I wanted to share is that um, as part of this goal-setting stuff we talked about earlier, um, we also have an agreement to have at least two uh, executive sessions with our town manager as part of our contract. Um, and this will be a chance for us to check in an executive session, that'll be on November fourth, that'll be our first one pursuant to our contract with Clint, which again, I think is, is a really good addition to our agreement in terms of keeping everybody on the same page and making sure we're moving, no one is surprised by anything, so we'll have that. Anybody else have any future agenda items or requests for supporting items? Yep. Is there any final public comment? Okay, that um, brought it online, right? What? Okay. Hmm, excuse me, all right, and we're gonna have items after executive session, right? So we gotta.
You're gonna go in once.
Okay.
You're discussing all three of those, so make a motion that you're going in for personnel matter, labor negoti- all three orders to go in right now.
Okay.
You don't have to come in, come back, come in, come back.
Could I get a motion?
Um, motion.
Second.
Motion and second in pursuit of MRS A, section four oh five, six A, personal matter, a six D labor negotiation, and um, two labor negotiations? Two lit, two, two labor negotiation items. Um.
And the uh, extending the deputy chief.
And extending the deputy chief, that's a personnel matter, right?
Yep.
Okay. Um, Council Lar, we have a motion on the table for that, Council Larway?
In favor.
Council Marks?
Uh, in favor, and Danit, it is important we note for the public that we will be coming out of these and potentially taking actions, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
We will be coming out and potentially taking action.
In favor.
Thank you, Council de merits in favor, Council Kenny? Council Powers?
In favor.
Council Baker?
In favor.
Okay, we're in executive session, we're gonna do it right here.
We're gonna go in the room, because we gotta get another video.
All right, I'm declaring that we are I'm declaring that we're out of executive session and back into live, regular session, and with that, uh, we will take up order twenty four, two, four, seven?
Yep.
Order extending the acting deputy chief duties for six months, could I have a motion?
Motion.
Second, okay.
Everyone wants to move in second, any discussion? Yep, uh, Council Larway?
In favor.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Council de merits in favor, Council Kenny?
In favor.
Council Power?
Favor.
Council Baker?
Favor.
Order twenty four, two, four, seven passes unanimously, thank you. Uh, next up, order twenty four, two, four, eight, order authorizing the town manager to execute a side agreement with ASME Council ninety-three regarding work fit, could I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded, uh, any discussion? And Council Larway?
In favor.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Council de merits in favor, Council Kenny? Council Powers?
In favor.
Council Baker?
Favor.
That passed unanimously, and now we're on to order twenty four, two, four, nine, order authorizing the town manager to execute a side agreement with ASME Council ninety-three regarding assistant clerk wages. Uh, could I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Okay, voting for passage, Council Larway?
In favor.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Council de merits in favor, Council Kenny?
In favor.
Council Powers?
In favor.
Council Baker?
Yep.
Okay, that passed unanimously, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So motion.
Moved and seconded, Council Larway?
In favor.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Council de merits in favor, Council Kenny?
In favor.
Council Powers?
In favor.
Council Baker?
Yep.
So adjourned, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Sarah.